Probably not doing anything else. Cocktail hour. All right, we're gonna call the meeting to order with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, public comment period. Anyone? No.
You start.
So I'll look for a motion to approve the June twenty first board meeting agenda.
Madam Chair, we do have one addition.
Okay.
Hire of part-time temporary election staff. Adding to the consent agenda.
And I will move the agenda, Madam Chair, with that addition.
Okay, and that's gonna go under the consent agenda?
Correct.
Okay. We hear a second?
Second.
Motion by Schmidt, second by Johnson, any more discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Look for a motion for the consent agenda. Do you wanna take us through it first?
Yes. First, we have approval of the June seventh board meeting minutes. Approval of social services, county and hospital accounts payable. Appointment to the Public Health Advisory Committee. Approval of the hire of a full-time public health nurse, Sharice Kiki. Level C forty-one, step seven, thirty-two fifty-nine an hour, effective June twenty-third. Reappointment to the Housing Redevelopment Authority. Promotion of Michaela Stade to full-time appraiser trainee, level B twenty-two, step one, twenty-ninety-four an hour, effective June twenty-second. Hire a full-time seasonal custodian helper, Jackson Markport, level A eleven, step one, fifteen eighty-four an hour, effective June twenty-third. Approval of a quote for the installation of glass on the courthouse level five railing. Approval of an application and permit for one to four day temporary on-sale liquor license. Approval of the twenty-twenty-two state boat and water safety grant contract. Approval of the recommended twenty-twenty-two AAS grant awards. And approval of the hire of the part-time temporary election clerks Lori Boacher and Jensen Diana McCarty at level A eleven, step four, seventeen thirty-two per hour. That includes the consent agenda.
Okay, does anyone have questions for, about the consent agenda? Paul?
Yes, one, I'm bringing it up right here. I was just wondering, the comment in there, it said the most recent applicant, Susan, resides in District Three. Do you try and place those from every district? Because it says but would bring. It was like you didn't want someone from District Three, however.
We try to get representation from every district. We've been trying for two years.
Okay.
And Commissioner Bradison and I had a conversation, this individual applied and expressed interest, and she brings really good nursing background that we don't currently have on our committee, so we decided she would be a good candidate.
Yeah, I wasn't questioning her credentials, it was more, okay, you must be trying to place from every district, I just wanted to clarify that, that's all.
In a perfect world, that would be nice to have, you know, coverage of every district, but we decided that someone is willing and qualified, why deny them the opportunity to serve?
And it's not in your bylaws that you have to do it that way?
Well, our bylaws are written in such a way that it recommends.
Okay.
Yeah. And we review and amend the bylaws annually, so if it feels like it needs to be readjusted, we can do that.
Well, I'm in agreement with you, don't get me wrong, I think if somebody's willing, that's half the battle.
Yep, that's true.
Um, I have a couple of questions, and this is for informational, for the public only. So, we're hiring a public health nurse at step seven. So, I'm assuming she has some outstanding qualifications?
Yes. Yeah, she's well experienced, Diane, if you wanna talk about that a little bit?
She has over, um, I'd say seven years of experience at least, but the last seven years have been in long-term care and a clinical nurse supervisor. Um, so yes, she, out of the three applicants, she came with the most experience and the most experience that was being relevant to public health.
Thank you, I assumed that, that Paul and I talked about it a little bit. I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood that. Um, and my other question. When we do the temporary election people, there, is that where they have to be one from each party, or is that a different, is that different part?
We'll talk about that when we get to the canvas board.
But that isn't this.
That isn't this, this is our staff that we're bringing in.
Okay, that's what I, that's what I assumed, and they were Ann Jensen?
Diana McCarty and Lori Boacher.
And they've done it before?
They have done it before.
That's what I thought. And appraiser trainee? That's someone that's never done appraising?
Correct, that's the first level, before the license level. So she has one-year theater license.
So they train here with the help of another appraiser, I'm assuming?
Yep.
They go, and then she's, in the meantime, getting licensed.
Right, um, she's already taken one class back in January, so she'll have two more classes to complete for next year.
Good. Any other questions?
Yes.
You go ahead, I've already had my one done.
Commissioner Schmidt?
It takes turns.
Joel, on the glass?
There you go.
Uh, do you remember what we budgeted for, or what we were?
We budgeted twenty-five thousand for that, so we're a little bit under budget on that one.
Okay, but I just, I can't remember exactly what number we had used there, that was my only question I had.
Well, my question, the very same thing, is, are these two bids apples to apples? Because, and I see the one is out of Saint Cloud, the one is right here.
Not, nothing to do with it.
Not apples.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's the blasphemy.
Wait a minute.
Excuse me, it's not apples to apples, yes. But I just wanted to make sure that we were, you know, getting the same exact...
Yeah, we had a couple of options there, but yes, that is, that's the glass, same, same type of framing.
Okay.
Um, they did give us a local, they gave us another option without redoing the railing part of it, but that actually meant it was higher number two, so it was actually more than what we're doing now, so I just kept it all the same.
So this'll just be from where that we worry about children falling through?
Correct, yes, this is an expansion of the glass upwards. Yep, it goes up.
It was also to prevent the sheriff having to have someone get aggressive and knock them over the edge?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's fall prevention, is what this is for.
Yeah. I have one last one, but I can't find it now.
AAS, or them grants and water safety grant, them all about the same as what they've been in the past, I mean, they're all, nothing changed.
The only thing else I had was, I just, I had a hard time making the math work when I looked at the total project cost, grant net project cost, amount above or below budget. I just...
For, for which item?
That would be the blasphemy.
Oh, we're not on, blasphemy is not part of the consent agenda?
It's not part of the what?
Not part of the consent agenda, that's gonna be a separate item for discussion.
Okay, I apologize.
It's actually the next item for discussions, we'll get to it.
I guess.
Number three. Any other questions?
I looked too far down, this is the very next one.
Any other questions? All right, if not, we're gonna take the vote. Julie, did you have anything?
I should do it.
She doesn't have enough.
You don't have a motion yet?
No.
Oh, I need a motion, I thought I did.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
We're off to a great start. Motion by Steve Schmidt, uh, second by Commissioner Bradison. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Phil Rampam, facilities manager.
We're here today to discuss, uh, safety window film. We got a couple quotes, um, and a couple of different, um, options, I guess, is it kind of how it looks there? Performance film, they did all, uh, they did, um, actually, that's opposite up there now, right? Looking Good Tint is actually the one.
Looking Good is the more expensive one?
Performance Film is the one that did all three options.
You're correct, yes, that's my mistake.
Yep, I just noticed that on there.
Yep.
So, anyway, Performance Film is the one we get, we get options. The first option is, um, we just did three M glass, and we're just gonna do the third and fourth floor. And that's where the first numbers came up to be. Uh, let's see. So, Looking Good, uh, did just the first option, was just the fourth floor and third floor. And that came up to be the ninety-five thousand on Looking Good Tint, actually, is the one that did that one. And then on, um, so we just did third floor with, uh, Performance Film, it was about the forty-nine, nine ninety-five. So I guess what we're, we're here to request is if, um, do we wanna do, um, add fifth floor to that? And that, that fifth floor would just be the tint, it wouldn't be actually the, it won't be security glass. So we're only gonna put security glass on, um, fourth and third, like the lower levels.
So, when we look at, when we look at this, as you recall, the grant that we got was for three projects combined together. There was the blasphemy, there was the windows, which you just approved, for five in the atrium, and there was a fence around the gas meter on the, um, on this head over here. When you combine those three project costs, you come up with sixty-eight eight ninety-five or seventy-eight six forty-five, depending on which option you choose. If you choose to do level five, our net project cost is, you know, taking out the grant, which covers thirty-three thousand seven hundred fifty dollars of the project. Uh, if you include level five, the net project cost is forty-four eight ninety-five, uh, compared to thirty-five one forty-five. We've, we budgeted sixty-six thousand, sixty-seven thousand five hundred dollars for this, not thinking that we would get the grant. Um, so either way, we're below budget, we're below budget by either thirty-two thousand dollars or twenty-two thousand dollars, depending on which option you choose.
Fifth floor, so what, what are my two options on the fifth? Basically?
It's either take the fifth floor or not.
But if you take the sixty-seven into, then it does.
Do we need to?
I'm sorry, say that again.
Do we need to do the, do we need to turn the fifth floor, I mean, is it necessary?
There was some discussion about, um, fail to, to block it off for people walking by, so you wouldn't see, and I think the tint would help for that. But there would be some benefits of heating and cooling benefits to, you know...
If I, if I recall, it was one of the things that was recommended as part of the, um, the report that was done. Yes, the, the courthouse security report, uh, but we hadn't originally included it as part of it, because our main focus was on the blasphemy. But as we got into it and found what the pricing was, we thought, well, let's take a look at what that would be.
And this doesn't affect any remodeling we do, or, I mean, adds to the security of?
Correct.
We're not gonna be putting it in, taking it out, moving it, or?
The only area that we're looking at doing the addition is on the one portion of the building here. The rest of the windows are gonna stay.
I was a little surprised fifth had to be done too, I guess, there.
It's not the blasphemy, it's just tinting, so that people can't see it.
That's a lot, it's a lot cheaper to do the, just the film, and that's more for kinda energy, would be one of the things, you know, for, um, consumption, um, and then you get some benefits for that. And plus, I think they wanted some of that hearing effects, so people would walk by, um, you can't see the building inside this much. That was kinda the option.
I mean, we do have the perimeter hallway.
Correct.
Fifth, so everybody's walking through there, so...
Yep.
That was kinda what we thought.
We can go perch out and park and... But I, we're not gonna find a better time to do it.
Correct.
We're not looking at replacing these windows anytime soon, because if you tint them, that, that goes with the window when you throw it out.
Right, so what we are gonna do is, some of the windows, I know there's a couple, I noticed some that we're gonna, we'll probably replace prior to putting the tint on, if that were the case. Or if they put the tint on them, you know, uh, so if you take that window out and replace it, they could possibly put the tint on it before it gets put back in. So then we'd have the tint on the new window, you know, I mean, so that either reduces the cost here, or when we order the new window, it would, you know, uh, we'll just slap that square footage out.
So any of that window replacement is in your maintenance budget though?
Yeah, well, yeah, that'll come out of the maintenance budget.
I mean, I mean, or I should say, it's in your budgeted.
Yeah, that'd be under, um, facilities cost, that isn't gonna affect this cost.
That's a good idea.
It'll actually probably reduce this if anything, because, you know, either they're not, they're gonna use the film on the new window, because we'll probably buy it with the film on it. Or if, um, they decide to do that, so that will be something we'll have to talk to the manufacturers, like the glass companies, um, to get them cost, I'm not sure what them are. I think there was only a couple, I think there's one that I noticed up there after we did some factoring in, for sure, and, and the county attorneys on fifth floor, so we have.
All right, any other questions?
No, I got my math to work, I just hadn't figured the sixty-seven that you had budgeted into my equation, as soon as I did that, yeah, I mean, I could make, make the numbers work, so.
All right, so I would look for a motion.
Which one are we doing?
And then there's two types of glasses, you can see.
Are we doing the?
Lesser, or do we want to go with the three M?
Um, we said, didn't you show us a little video? Really no difference in the two?
Really, there's no difference in there, other than the name.
Yeah.
Three M is a pretty popular name, so I think you're paying a little more, the film size and the thickness is the same between the two companies, so they're really, just at once, a little cheaper average.
The video that we were showing really showed what this stuff can do, yeah.
So you have a recommendation though for?
I would say Suntech, I would recommend to go with.
You wanna do level five too? I mean, your recommendation?
I would recommend to do level five, and...
And that falls in line with the study that?
Yep.
The, was it US Marshals or?
Marshals.
Marshals report.
That would be my recommendation, to do level five and, um, the security glass at level four.
So that's a seventy-eight six forty-five.
And then use it Suntech as the...
Yep, that's correct.
And then I would do for, with Performance Film?
Does anyone have any objection to that, or more discussion, or?
I'll make a motion for, to use the, to accept a bid for seventy-eight six forty-five less the grant, um, to do all the levels of the courthouse needed with the film.
If you take the seventy-eight six forty-five, I'll second that.
Any discussion? So, to be clear, then, this money comes from?
So, we have, we have money budgeted for this in the capital project fund, and then we already have a grant that we can see from the judicial branch through their safe and secure courthouse.
And that grant was?
That's the thirty-three thousand seven hundred.
Thirty-seven. Any further discussion?
And that's been secured.
We have the funds.
If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you, Joel. Bill Smalls, Public Works Director.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Bill.
Public Works Director, on one item for consideration this morning. It's a project you've heard quite a bit about the last couple of meetings or times I presented, so I didn't put a ton of information in the packet for you, but it is considered the final acceptance and payment for Project SP zero four seven six oh six dash zero one zero, so this is a federally and state aid funded regrading project southeast of the city of Dassel on Arcasa Six. So widening, adding shoulders, um, improving one horizontal curve and a few vertical curves, and then new pavement. Project came in about three percent over our initial estimate, um, majority of that was due to a soils correction, subgrade issues we had, um, next to one of our swamps that we had to build the road through. Um, so I recommend final payment and acceptance on the contract.
And I have driven that road and it's vast improvement, just someday, how are you ever gonna address those narrowing to go underneath the railroad tracks?
Those bridges are owned by the railroad.
Yep.
Um, we don't have a lot of control over those bridges, we do inspect them and file reports on them, and I will say our railroad bridges, where we have roads under the bridge, they're, they're all, they're all in top shape.
Yeah.
But, um, they're a railroad responsibility.
It's how narrow they are, you better have a direct shot going through, I don't know if you guys have been down that one, but...
I've been through that one.
Yeah. And I don't know how wide you could go with a truck, can you take a full-size truck through there?
No, and there's a height restriction on the one, and that's actually on township piece of road. Casas Six bends to the west, south of Dassel, and before you get north, so that lasts, I think it's three-quarters of a mile, one mile, is a township stretch. But yeah, one of the struggles you get is it's such a narrow corridor, every vehicle has to take the same path, so there's top holes every single spring, and sometimes later in the season too, that need to be addressed, because it's tough.
All right. Need for a motion for final acceptance and payment?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Julie. We hear a second?
I'll second, oh, go ahead, Steve.
Second by Commissioner Schmidt, any more questions? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you, um, brief construction update, we wrapped up our chip seals yesterday on Casas Six, this road, um, Casas One and Casas Thirty-five. Next will be our reclaim projects most likely, and then some H-cadment marking and, uh, box covers later in the season. Reclaims right now, Night River tentatively is scheduled for July fifth, um, so I'd expect them to be working sometime that week or the week following, depending what shakes, shakes up with their current schedule, current projects.
Well, they certainly haven't had any rain delays this spring.
No.
Not recently.
Not recently. And what's going on out on the west side of town? We just redid that road, and now we're putting, um, the shoulders, kinda doing?
Yep. You're talking about our chip seal, so we covered the existing pavement, it's basically like sunscreen on our new pavement, it keeps the oil in, keeps it from drying out as fast. Um, as asphalt dries out, it becomes more brittle. So that chip seal, it's a wearing surface and protection for the pavement, and it'll fill some of the hairline cracks that have opened up on that overlay, but it's mainly for protection of the pavement from, uh, weather effects.
Somebody asked me, didn't they just redo that road? And I said, yes.
And, and that's what it looks like, it looks like we're redoing things again, but it's just oil and rock.
I was on my way down to Rosendale on Thursday, and one of the flagmen was gone, so I drove up. It was a stretch I couldn't see on, so no flagmen, I just kept going, well, guess what? There was a flagman on the other end who just sent a fleet of cars my way.
Troublemaker.
Just one of those things.
Yeah, yeah, traffic control and chip seals is kind of a, it's a dance, it's a fast-moving project.
Yep.
Um, I'd say Pearson Brothers did this year's work, they're better than most, but there's still leaks, I know one is, it's for someone to drive through fresh oil, and the contractor needs to take care of it, it's part of their contract.
Now, it looks good though, the road looks good, drives nice, so...
But it'll be better once we get the paint done.
I was right, you gotta strap it again.
Okay.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you. Paul Bogovich, Social Service Director.
Good morning. Paul Bogovich, Social Services, I'm here to request, uh, approval via resolution for the selection of Prime West as our PMAP plan for Minnesota choice, or excuse me, for, um, PMAP plan for families and children, uh, as a sole source for our Medicaid, medical assistance folks. And Blue, uh, Prime West and Blue Plus as our partners for our Minnesota Care Component, that is required by the Affordable Care Act, because it's on the open exchange. With Prime West being the default plan, and what that means is if a person doesn't actively select Blue Plus, then they would just default to Prime West.
And is this the, what you had in the past too?
Yes. No changes is what we're looking for.
Move to approve a resolution recommending Prime West as a sole managed care organization provider for families and children, medical assistance, and Prime West and Blue Plus for Minnesota Care.
Motion by Commissioner Johnson, second by Commissioner Schmidt, questions, discussion? Not, Cory, do you wanna do the roll call?
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bradison?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Oberg?
Yes.
Thank you.
Quick and easy, thank you, Paul.
Have a good day.
You're two, bar block, county auditor.
Good morning. Just on my, item I have is establishing the absentee ballot board, let me hop into that a little bit, so that we're all on board with the requirements and understand them. So first off, the auditor that clerk must establish a ballot board to examine, accept, uh, reject mail, YOCA, which is military and overseas, and absentee ballot return envelopes. And that ballot board must consist of judges that are trained in handling those types of ballots, and also, uh, trained in election judging in general. The appointing authority, one I have the authority for establishing is the county board, and therefore, why I'm here for you today. The ballot board must, and needs to declare a party, and we all know that we have the four major parties, so we gotta take care of that party balance. So they need to be from different major political parties when they are providing the service of the ballot board in comparing signatures. When we have the mail ballot, obviously, there's not a signature, because those ballots are sent out, those are absentee coming back, so there's criteria that they need to review, to be sure that the envelope is properly completed. And that does not require, uh, party balance on that particular task. And then also, there is the absentee, where you put the last form of your social or your nurse license as your comparison, and not necessarily comparing the signature. So there's several different levels that these people will be performing based on how we sort those ballots out. So county staff will be paid according to their wage schedule, we've done this a number of years, and they can accumulate comp time if they help us in need, which they likely will, a few of them anyway, on election night and just prior. Uh, the staff down next to us in zoning has been excellent, and helping, and we help back and forth. We do have trained election judges that will be coming in, which are party representatives, and that's one of, part of the mix. And in the past, we have used staff and we have used outside, and those trained election judges, I've selected four of them, they're highly trained in, um, just elections in general, and will be a great asset to our team, and I'm asking that you consider paying them twenty-five dollars per visit. Their visit could be five minutes, their visit could be an hour, depending on how many signatures that they would have to compare and look at, and with the primary, minimal, the general more. And they will be on rotating schedules based on when I pair them properly with other staff, so that we have party balance. We also will pay them mileage, and as you see, most of those won't be traveling very far. So I estimate that there'll be twenty-five, thirty more meetings, the absentee ballot board, because we meet within five days of receiving the ballots for the first, uh, four weeks of absentee period. And within, uh, three days, when we receive them, as we get closer, because we have the requirement to get those turned back out if they're rejected. So we do call absentee ballot boards upon need, and upon how many ballots happen to appear on a Monday or whatever. So we're giving them a pre-planned schedule, so that there's some, um, idea as to when they will be meeting, and also for the public to know when we're meeting, because the public may view, however, not touch or examine, and they have certain criteria that they can do. So we'll be very transparent, and letting them know when that's happening on a daily basis. So I do have the resolution establishing the ballot board, along with the exhibit listing, the temporary staff or staff that we will be assigning. Many of these are returning staff that have done, uh, this for one year or several years, and you just, um, approve the temporary election staff. Those are people that we've had onboard, but we paid them under the ten ninety-nine, or as an independent contractor prior, and now they're going to be employees of the county on a temporary, part-time basis, and that's why the procedure that was going on earlier today. So if you would consider the resolution, and then secondly, consider, um, the non-county staff compensation and mileage.
Okay, so I'm looking for a resolution to establish the ballot board first.
Now, this board can change year by year, according to individuals, but the resolution is to establish this procedure.
Correct, and we've established this procedure before, it's recommended in our training that we reestablish this on a semi-annual or biennial basis, so that it's clearly, um, having the attachment in this one document.
I have a quick question about using staff. And we've discussed it, I'm not against it, I just want, do, do other counties use staff, a lot of, counties our size use staff a lot, because there is some blowback about that at times.
Correct, there was some blowback on it, um, we had a conference last week, and there was kind of like a informal show of hands. Many counties use pretty much all staff, and some counties do the, the multi, and some counties do totally outside. So, it's kind of across the board, far and away, more are using staff. Uh, one of the drawbacks of staff is that they do need to, um, allow for party balance, and so sometimes asking staff to declare their party is an issue. Any of these don't want to, or choose not to declare their party, I use them in different ways, so I have a number of them that have no problem declaring their party, and I have... So I have a number of them that have no problem declaring their party, and I have some that would rather not, and I honor that all the way through.
So that, so they're registered to that party though? That, I can, can I just come in here and tell you I'm a flaming liberal Democrat and I want to serve on that, you might not believe me, but.
You can tell me.
I could have left the flaming part out, I guess.
Right.
I, if I say to you. I just tell you.
Hmm, correct, and I keep that in silence, now, we're not supposed to share that data, but it's pretty obvious if you and I are working together and we're working on a team. And you and I work together and we're working on a team, that pretty soon you know who they are.
But, but I'm just saying then that they're not necessarily registered to that party, they're just telling you what party they're in.
Right, and they, and all are, all of the judges are allowed to do that. They don't need to go to their caucuses and be on the party list. Now, what you might be hearing is there is a caucus party list which we have give, to give preferential treatment. And we have to make sure that all of those are given an assignment or or an opportunity to be assigned, and that was what that large court case was. Between Olmsted County and Proving, I can't remember, was one other one.
Right.
That were taken to task on the fact that did they indeed exhaust the both political party lists that were provided? And we are working through that, each township and each city has been given their people. And when they sign them up for election judge training, I know that they're signed up, and anyone who has not called in to be signed up that's on that list, we will send them an invite to say, here's the training, you can become a judge, we will use you where we can. So we're, we cover all of those.
But inevitably, you have the final say who you use where.
They need to meet certain criteria of uh being an election judge and being competent to do it, yes.
And and when you say when you work with someone, you 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 kind of can tell where they stand, how, how, I'm curious.
I, I have personally interviewed with each one of them and and sort of go through the process of what needs to happen. And I do hear back on their philosophy, and so like I do a little bit of, well, you might say vetting. However, I, I don't have the issues that a lot of counties do, and I'm hearing some of the nightmares last week, I'm glad I don't. Uh we are very passionate people and I respect that totally when they call and ask the judges or when they're talking about their party. But there's other issues beyond being passionate.
Well, I understand, but I mean.
So, where do you go to get registered, I don't, you know, that's such a funny thing, I've always said I'm a registered Democrat or I'm a registered Republican. I never registered for anything, have you?
I think so.
You, you definitely evolved in the caucus.
That's.
And I, and I can give you the context.
No.
Four ways if you like.
No, no, no.
I, I wasn't trying to, but everybody has a right to do that.
Oh sure, yeah.
Absolutely, if they're proud to say I'm a registered Democrat or Republican, they are, that's one right that we have to protect in this country forever, we can still vote.
So, we will need to have a motion to adopt a resolution, we can't combine these two, can we, because the pay would be separate.
I will do it separately.
Yeah. Motion to adopt the resolution to establish the Meeker County Absentee Ballot Board and Appoint Membership.
Motion by Commissioner Johnson, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bredesen, any more questions? Cory?
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Bredesen?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Ober.
Yes.
Okay.
Incidentally, the absentee balloting period for the primary starts this Friday, and we received their ballots and went through and made sure things were in order, we'll be sorting them out, setting up our station in the uh lower level beginning Friday. We will also be bailing out ballots for the mail ballot precincts, we informed that those ballots will be in the mail on July eleven. And that is our goal, so we have things um falling in place very nicely for the upcoming election. There will be two issues, um and they are school, school bond for uh Kimball and Dassel Cale. So we do see that this primary probably will bring in more interest because those are um likely going to drop.
Certainly less than other years though.
Uh, right away for the primary, yes, but we'll see. The second item is to establish the canvas board, and I think some of you have served the canvas.
No, we got to vote on the other motion for the pay.
Twenty-five dollar.
I'll make a motion to approve payment on non-county staff at twenty-five dollars per absentee ballot board meeting attended plus mileage.
I will second that.
Motion by Commissioner Schmidt, second by Commissioner Johnson, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
So now the canvas board, so this is members of the county board of commissioners along with the court administrator, the mayor of the county's largest seat, which is going to be Lynchville City. And they, two of you selected by your membership that are not on the ballot. You will meet on the second or third day after the state primary, which I've already determined that date will be Friday, August twelfth. And then between three and ten days after the November election, we've determined that date to be November fourteenth, we're using Monday because Friday is a legal holiday.
So it can't be Steve or I.
Oh, I was just gonna make that motion.
So it has to be one of you.
Or, or if you want to split for the primary in general, you certainly have that option as well.
It's, it doesn't take, it doesn't, let's not do that to him, he has a busy life.
But uh I.
But they could teach him not to go to Estonia, I guess.
Yeah.
But remember, each of you, if you can't make your uh commitment, you may appoint someone in your place.
And that's been, that's happened.
And that's happened frequently.
It's not a big deal, it's a few minutes on your day.
I am more than willing, I'm not running for anything, so I'm running away from a lot of things, but not running for anything.
And I am unavailable on Friday, August twelfth, we have a wedding and it's uptown.
Why don't you just make a motion for Paul to do it then?
Do we just need one person?
For doing both, well, can't we just make it one motion?
Yeah, oh yeah, 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 yeah.
That he's gonna do them both.
Be appointed and then choose to have a delegate.
Madam Chair, we need two, we, we need two people from the county board on it though.
Okay, well, that's fine then, make a motion, I make, Steve, make the motion. This is not difficult, I've done it, it's really.
Doesn't mean, you can say Paul and Danny or Paul and Julie and those two can appoint someone to.
So you don't want to do it the way your chair just said, appoint.
I make a motion to appoint uh Paul and Danny to the board right now, and how, what else, to the canvas board.
How's that sound?
I'll slag it up.
Okay.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, I think. See what Danny's got to say with that.
I think he was a little forewarned.
Alright. Thank you Barb, Greg Schultz, Land Use Director.
Which ones do you like?
Morning, Greg Schultz, Land Use Director, morning, we have three items on the agenda, first on is the C U P for Seth Maddal for the landscaping project on Lake Stella. Planning on bringing in about sixty cubic yards of materials for a landscaping project, mostly pavers, some boulder walls. It's basically replacing what's existing there already on the site. You see pavers are in the house, it's wood. We see the boulders there, he's got a retaining wall, they're now blocked, he's gonna replace the retaining wall with boulder walls.
Good year for them to do something like that because water level is already down, so you can work down there by the shoreline without.
Yeah, there's going to be riprap as well, and uh Ethan did counter, but no additional permit for riprap.
Okay.
This is, this must be just inside Bess, it's, isn't it, that yours?
I couldn't tell you, I have a little bit there, not much.
Starling Township.
Then it's.
Move to approve an application for conditional use permit to move more than ten cubic yards of material within the shore impact zone and fifty cubic yards of material in the Shoreland District of the recreational development Lake Stella with the conditions uh that were mentioned in the permit.
Motion by Commissioner Johnson, do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Bredesen, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
So, look how fast this is, we could have had this morning. If we would have, you know, what would have happened?
That's for city land here in Roddland, rezoning, implementing a classification survey, first part of the zoning of it. So, you see on the map up there, the brown part, the uh parcel zero seven zero zero eight, almost seven zero 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 was replatted and rezoned as an outlot back in uh nineteen seventy-five, Shoreland Flat, West Shore Flat. So the other parcel on the west side, zero seven zero zero four one was kept as agriculture, was not part of the plat. So now they're going to rezone both of those parcels, we're going to rezone this R one so they can make a three lot plat of both of those parcels. They're the three lots, right, they're not two lots, that can see the survey right inside of the screen up there. Two of the lots are going to be, one's going to be two point four nine acres, one's going to be two and a half acres, and a, a westerly lot is going to remain eighteen point two five acres.
So I see there was people, they're concerned about erosion?
Erosion control, there's going to be a big parcel there, as you see, there's a lot of it, you can see. So some of the neighbors to the east and to the north are concerned about erosion control, um I think. It's the uh, the boards kind of opinion was that it'll probably help all that erosion, as you can see, a lot of washouts, there's a lot of washing going on. The neighbors are more, maybe ask the question about uh grant money for erosion control just in general on properties. There is money, I talked to Joe in Armond about it, there is some money available for erosion control on projects like this, if anyone has wished to apply for it.
But there was no conditions put on.
No.
Okay. So, looking for a motion?
So the reason for the reclassification is that they want to sell some of these?
They want to put a house dwellings on. There's only one, but now they want to have three buildings, three blocks of the building. Therefore, they have to reason that A one to R one or R two to get a building, that's building with the plat.
And in all likelihood, if someone buys that to build a home on, they're going to take care of that water issue. Because they're not going to want to have their lawns eroded, is it?
I believe it's all relatives.
So they're all, they, they already know who's going to. So they're just removing it from A to.
Oh, it won't be in tillable ground, any, you know, I mean, the area that's growing, they'll have grass on it.
Yeah, that picture doesn't look like anything's been done with it, can you go back to the picture, please Andrew?
Well, this year.
But either way, when you look at.
How many thousands of pictures of land, you want to see from this spring?
Yeah.
That one week was brutal, this is probably the most washing I've ever seen in a spring, if that's current. But at the same time, uh, if they're gonna split it up, I, I, and it's in the comments here, that'll, Greg indicated the land looked highly eroded as it's currently used. So I mean, it's gonna get better, worse, so.
And a passive planning mention and uh with the seven removal.
Yep.
I'll move to approve the rezoning application and change the entire parcel zero seven zero zero four one zero 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 from A one agricultural preservation district to rural resident, R one rural residential district to allow for the parcel to be platted for building eligibility.
We can do this both as one, can't we?
Can we do two at a time or just one? Do them each individually, okay.
So I'll look for a second on the first motion.
I'll second that.
Motion by Schmidt, second by Bredesen, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Madam Chair, I'll move to approve the preliminary plat application for the three lot plat of Lund Hills location in section two township one nineteen, range twenty-nine, parcel zero seven zero zero four one zero 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 and zero seven, zero eight, zero seven, zero 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 of Das Township and partially located within Shoreland District of Big Swan Lake.
Motion by Commissioner Schmidt, do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Could you repeat those numbers, please? Got it.
He did handle all those zeros very well, didn't he?
He did well, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Excuse me Greg, could I have you pull the microphone closer to you, people viewing are having a hard time hearing you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next item is the amendment for landfill operation contract. As you know, we've been in negotiations with Endurance for the past, since past few months. They came to us wanting a new contract, a contract amendment since two thousand nineteen. At that time, what was K, he operated the company since then, K, he has been bought out by Endurance. So with that, we need to have a new amendment contract with Endurance Environmental. What they are requiring for new operations on that site.
I know we had discussion about this, I don't know if it was a work session or what, but we had quite a discussion about this. Can you give us just a quick synopsis of how all of that came to be?
Yeah, they came to us in, I believe it was originally in January, they came to us and said, I'm gonna let you know that that the contract we currently have with the county is no longer, or is uh, is no longer, uh they're losing money on the contract they had with us, basically what comes down. So they want to come back to us with a new proposal, which is the proposal they've had here in front of us. Where not only it's a financial change for them and us, but it's also a responsibility change with them as us. As we're going to take on more responsibilities now with this, with this site, we're going to take on utilities, we'll take on the billing. We'll take on a contract to Spruce Ridge or wherever the contract out with this mixed solid waste, um as well as, as other things that are in the contract. If I mentioned the utilities will be part of ours as well.
The, the big, the big change here is the shifting of the risk ultimately. Because right now, we receive uh in revenue, the county receives in revenue the bulk of the money for the demo landfill. The contractor receives all of the revenue for the tipping fees for the mixed solid waste. That would shift, where we would now receive all of the revenue that comes in, but in exchange, we would pay a larger operating fee of twenty-six thousand dollars per month. That would provide staff members on site, it would provide equipment, and then they would haul it for a fee of twenty-one dollars per ton um to um Spruce Ridge or wherever we have a contract, likely Spruce Ridge, they're the closest, you know, major landfill. Um, that's, that's really the major shift that we have here. Everything else that kind of comes along with that is, is really just details of who's going to do what in that relationship. So rather than pay, paying an annual, well, really was a quarterly um management fee of I think forty-seven thousand some dollars. And then the, and then they would collect all the revenue that came into the facility. That would change, we would pay a larger amount to them, but we would collect all of the revenue that came. So as Greg did the analysis on that, what we determined is that our current tip fees were not um sufficient in order to cover those costs. Uh and so we're recommending that the fees be adjusted to uh eighty-two dollars per ton for mixed solid waste. Uh which is up from seventy-four, seventy-six dollars per ton and up to twenty dollars per loads of um under a thousand pounds of demolition debris, four dollars per ton for in-county loads and sixty dollars per ton for out-of-county loads, which as you recall, we upped at the beginning of the year, this would be an additional increase on top of that. But that, when we worked with uh the Solid Waste Committee. But that, when we worked with, uh, the solid waste committee, talking about, you know, does this proposal look reasonable? And what should the fee structure look like, one of the goals was, we wanted to make sure that, uh, um, the operation wasn't losing money. We weren't subsidizing this facility with tax dollars while we go through the process of exploring a sale of the facility.
And will we be open? Are we man, we have people lined up to work there, we won't be closing it down?
And, and that's, and that's the other thing, you know, the other option that we had, really, we had three choices. We could accept the proposal, which originally, as you recall, when we talked about this a couple of months ago, they wanted thirty thousand dollars a month. So we were able to negotiate, you know, four thousand dollars.
Well, I think that was quickly pooh-poohed by the owner, wasn't it? That first initial.
We, we had further discussions.
The raise, you know, he said it was a employee that probably.
We, we, we had further discussions.
Okay.
So we were able to negotiate on that. Second, um, the second option would be that we, you know, not continue on with the existing contract that we have and, and conduct a request for proposals. There's a risk that comes along with that in that who else are gonna propose on this? And the offer that's being given to us now then comes off the table and they can propose and propose at a higher rate. The third option is we shut down the facility and we work through the, the sale that we're, uh, we're exploring. Um, the option, of course, there means that that facility is no longer open for the public to be able to use, and that was not a desirable option as well. That's how we ended up with the choice of making.
What's the closest one they would have to go to if we closed out here?
Candy, Ohio.
Candy. Do we know what their tip fees are?
Coltsburg would be for the demo.
Do we know what their tip fees are and their, uh, ton, per ton cost or not that, I'm just curious?
We tried to keep that relatively close to our neighborhood.
You looked into that?
You know, so.
Yeah, we had the discussion and, and Maker is, I mean, when it was closed, you find out, you know, everybody was calling you because you're. And I mean, the comment, oh, you're a lot cheaper in Spruce Ridge, I go, Spruce Ridge, it's gonna cost me more. I mean, so I, we're not on the high side, and that was the discussion we went through.
Okay.
Right, and we can't operate out of negative, I mean, we're just, we gotta balance the books, so.
And then in the meantime, we continue to explore our options, correct?
Correct.
But as Andrew said, the, the goal was, we can't be losing money on this, we need to be at a, at a break even point, so.
Yeah, in, in, in county, or I'm sorry, an out-of-county self-hauler to go to Candy, Ohio would cost a hundred and seventeen dollars a ton. Um, and out-of-county commercial hauler, uh, would have, would be a hundred and one dollars per ton. So it's still cheaper for our residents to come to our facility than go to Candy, Ohio.
Okay.
And have we resolved the employment out at the site?
For the demo site?
Yes, everything has been, and the equipment is up, up and running, we were having some equipment issues, waiting for parts and. It's all been resolved.
Running, as far as I know.
Very good. Okay.
Okay.
I can change.
Oh, sure, yeah, in a heartbeat, but hopefully.
As a solid waste committee, I think we were all unanimous on this was, at this time, our best, best option.
Yeah, I would agree.
We went back to them with an offer, Paul suggested we go back to them with an offer and they accepted that. So it lowered our impetus, we'd have to raise the fees more too, to cover that, so.
So the recommended motions, do you want two or can they be together?
Uh, you could do it together.
I move to approve an amendment to the transfer station operation contract to reflect the proposed operational changes. And I move to amend the mixed solid waste tip fee to eighty two dollars per ton and the demolition debris tip fees to twenty dollars for loads under one thousand pounds. And forty dollars per ton for in-county loads and sixty dollars per ton for out-of-county loads.
And, and to clarify, both of these would be effective July first.
I would second that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Bradison, second by Commissioner Johnson, any further discussion or questions of anyone? Not, I would call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you, thanks, guys. Um, Mckell Johnson, human service coordinator.
Good morning, Mckell Johnson, human resources coordinator. I have three personnel policies to bring forward to you today to look over and approve. The first is the communicable disease and prevention policy. So back in January of two thousand twenty one, we implemented the utilization of sick leave due to COVID nineteen related reasons. That policy allowed us to be more flexible with our sick time, um, language on how, when people took sick leave. And for them to be able to take it for COVID nineteen related reasons. Um, it also allowed them to take an advance of pay of up to eighty hours, um, for COVID related reasons. We kept extending that every six months and knowing that that would again end in, on June thirtieth of this month. Uh, we were looking at whether we completely discontinue that policy or, or where we go from here. So this policy came out of looking at that, thinking about what happens if we don't have any flexibility for. Uh, employees that need to quarantine or, or isolate or any of those kinda things. And, and especially, uh, newer employees that don't have that bank accrued yet. So this posi, this policy would replace that utilization of sick leave policy. This would become a more permanent policy so that we wouldn't have to look at extending that policy every time. Uh, the nice thing is that we haven't had a high utilization of that policy. We've only had one employee in the last six months and they used eight hours. So it wasn't something that we're really relying on this heavily. Um, but having this in place allows some flexibility for us to be able to assist those employees. And I am still getting calls, um, when people are, are testing positive still. So it's still something that's out there, it's still something that we are, we're seeing. And this policy also would move us away from specific COVID nineteen language and move it more into a communicable disease language. In the event that we continue to see COVID or in the event that we hopefully, knock on wood, don't ever have it happen. But if we have something come up in the future that is also a communicable disease, this would help us to be able to address that more quickly. Than trying to, uh, create a policy on the spot like we did at the beginning of COVID.
The idea here is that if we have a disease that's floating around, we don't want to create a negative incentive where someone feels they have to come to work. Cause they're out of sick time and then get other people at work sick. We want them to stay home, recuperate and help us quarantine and isolate the disease.
So would tonsillitis be a communicable disease or?
There's a list of communicable diseases in the policy.
Okay.
Um, and there is a, and I think we also refer to MDH in the event that something new comes up.
Then do they provide a doctor slip to you or how do you?
They can, yes, yep, we didn't require it with this last time, no, we didn't require it. Uh, they, we did have them fill out a form to request, so they did have to attest that it was due to COVID in the last go around. So we still would have them fill out a form to attest the reasoning for needing it.
So the examples include tuberculosis, chickenpox, shingles, infectious mononucleosis, MRSA, severe acute respiratory syndrome, or SARS. Other coronaviruses, measles, pertussis, meningitis, diphtheria, pandemic influenza, or other diseases reportable to MDH. So basically, if you go to the doctor and the doctor says, hey, you have this thing, I need to report it to MDH, that's something that would be, uh, eligible.
Did you say shingles?
Are you glad you asked?
Yes.
Shingles, I don't think shingles is considered a communicable disease.
It is, under that one, it is.
But I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna have that debate, but.
Well, I, I think what you're saying is the policy's been working well and not been, being abused. We'd like to continue to, that's really what we're.
So I agree, so my other question would be then, if they use that and they quit, how do you get that back?
Uh, for this, does this one still, I can't remember if this one still has the clawback from their final.
It does.
Does it, yep.
Yeah, so we would take that back out of their final check if they, they quit.
Yeah, and the doctors know, the reason that that's not directly in the policy as a requirement is that when COVID hit. Doctors' offices were so busy that they were actually, you know, we were being advised by legal counsel that we should not be asking for doctors' notes on it. Because they were just too busy that they weren't going to get it to us, so that was the reasoning for that.
At the time.
At the time.
However, that's not the case today.
Right.
So we're putting, I mean, I think it's okay to have some prevention in place from abuse, even though it hasn't been.
Sure, yep.
I'm fine with it, it works, it's fine.
I mean, you haven't, you've only had a couple of people utilize it throughout the whole.
Yeah, so in two thousand twenty, when the, there was, at that time, that were, there was that federal. Where they would automatically get the time, we had thirteen employees use it at that time, we had, which wasn't that policy, that was prior to the policy.
Yep, yep.
Then in two thousand twenty one, we didn't have any, and then in two thousand twenty two, we've just had the one.
So it's not like it's difficult to monitor.
No, but we're changing a lot of policies because of COVID, you know, at some point in time, that's fine, I'm not against this policy. But I think that it's not wrong to have somebody, they call and say, I have measles. Wouldn't you go to the doctor to see that you are diagnosed with whatever, so would it be wrong to provide a slip for that?
So, so we, we do require communication with the employee, you know, regularly if they're out on, on any sort of leave. If they're out for three days, there's FMLA paperwork that needs to be.
Or are they self-diagnosing shingles and measles or?
If, if.
Is it invasive to ask, that's all I'm saying.
Certainly, if it's the desire of the board, we can, um, you know, amend language in here to require a doctor's note unless, you know. Re, otherwise recommended by the MDH or C B C.
If you do amend it, use the word, you require documentation, because if you require somebody to go to the doctor, the union can say you will pay for the doctor visit.
I know, Paul, but how can they call, this is a different case, they're not just calling in sick, they're saying, I have a communicable disease. And I wanna borrow from my P, not P T O, we don't have that, but from my sick leave. Which I'm not against that policy, but how would you know what disease you have if you haven't been to the doctor? That's all I'm saying. So I don't think it's invasive.
As Andrew said, any one of these is probably gonna be more than a three day pass, so the FMLA paperwork should.
As I said, we can certainly put a sentence in there that requires documentation from a medical provider, absolutely.
I mean, are you comfortable with not having a medical provider slip, I mean?
Well, and like, like they said, usually if it ends up being over the three days, then I'm doing the FMLA and then we are getting in-depth paperwork. Um, but I have no problem adding a sentence to it.
Whatever, whatever the wish of the board is, I just think that at some point in time here, you know.
When we, when we crafted this, the, the, certainly the intent was, in the event that we have another pandemic such as COVID. We wanted to have our policies be prepared to be able to handle that, so that we didn't have to.
Well, we're not done with COVID, I mean, that's still there.
And that's, and that's the other issue, is that when we looked at periodically renewing every six months a temporary policy. Well, how long are, at what point do we stop doing that as, as COVID becomes endemic and becomes continuous?
I agree with that, I agree with that, I'm just saying, now we're engulfing a lot of things, so. What are the wishes of the board?
Well, are you, you have three items in here.
Correct.
You're gonna cover the other three.
You wanna do them separate or?
We should take them all as one, can't we? I think that's where the resolution shows.
There's, there's not a resolution.
Or a motion.
The way the recommended motion is, but we could certainly take them individually if it's the desire of the board.
I think we should take them individually, in case we wanna add or.
So you're okay on a little language, just, I mean, that's.
They can have up to eighty hours, they can.
Yeah, it depends on whether they're full or part-time and, and things like that, so the, the max that someone could get is eighty hours.
So you would be looking for a motion to say, uh, move to approve the change in the policy, um, for, um, communicable diseases. With those discussed verbiage changes.
Yeah, with a requirement to have, uh, doc, medical documentation. And Commissioner Bradison to that question specifically, the idea, when the initial temporary policy was drafted was, there was a, uh, a two-week period. That someone was supposed to quarantine in the event that they got COVID. Well, if that person is out of sick time where they, you know, don't have sick time on day one, you don't want them to feel like they have to be able to come back into work. After ten days or five days and potentially get someone sick.
But now I think it's less time for quarantine too, isn't it?
Correct, yep, they have to.
That, that kinda is fluid too, that changes.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Absolutely.
Yeah. If, now it's if you feel well, just put a mask on and go to work, so it's hard to know. All right, so, do we have a motion?
I'll move that motion as I stated it.
What was it?
You're gonna do that to me?
It was approval of the policy with the additional language requiring medical documentation.
Yes, that was my motion, that was my motion.
The communicable disease.
Just communicable disease.
So do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Johnson, second by Commissioner Bradison, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you. Boyhead McCall.
Okay, so the next one is just an update to our current policy, so the legislation changed for nursing mothers. Uh, some of the key takeaways is that now breaks must be paid breaks to express milk. Um, previously, it was unpaid, um, so that is a change. Um, and then also, they can take multiple breaks where previously it just said break. So they have added the plural S to that, so. Uh, we've already been following this, we were following this, I think, before the legislation even changed, um, cause we wanted to be flexible with employees. So if this is just to make sure that our language reflects that.
By the way, I'm glad you were following it, I did not realize that we charged nursing mothers for breaks to work, so. Yeah. Pretty self-explanatory.
Move to approve the nursing mother's policy change for Maker County?
Motion by Paul?
All second.
Second by Commissioner Schmidt. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
And since I was updating policies, I figured I'd throw this one in there too. Um, so our practice has been for new employees that their health insurance starts on the first of the month following thirty days of full-time employment. And I realized that our policy language didn't reflect that, so this is just a change to update, to make, that, to make sure that it says the first of the month following thirty days of full-time employment for new hires.
So someone who starts on July fifth.
Then their health insurance would start on September first.
Yeah, so it's a little more than thirty days for those folks.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that's more than thirty days, right?
But it's the first of the month following the thirty days.
Right, but they wouldn't have their first thirty in, they wouldn't have their first thirty in until August fifth, approximately.
Correct, yep.
So then they have to wait until September.
So they have no coverage then for actually?
Sixty days closer to it.
Sixty days closer to sixty.
Yep.
Okay. Any, looking for a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the health insurance eligibility policy update.
Motion by Commissioner Schmidt, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bradison, any further discussion?
Do we have a thirty day, um, you have to work for thirty days kind of a preliminary approval time period set?
So are they on probation for thirty days?
So our employees are on probation for a year, is what their probation period is.
So this just puts into language the health insurance thing.
Yeah, so this is just regarding the health, well, pretty much all of our benefits follow the same timeline.
Doesn't tie to a probation period.
So when someone does become a new employee here, I, I'm assuming you probably tell them your first eligibility date will be.
And, and Mckell, it's for administrative purposes, right? So it allows time for the insurance companies to get them their documentation, get them on rules. And the way we're billed is on a monthly basis, starting on the first of the month, and so we're not getting partial month bills.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Have you got all the personnel policies updated, don't you, it looks like you've been, it's like you've been busy, or is it a non-stop?
I'll still be bringing more in front of you because we have yet to do the tuition reimbursement.
All the things we added, okay, good.
Some of those, and then, um, one's linked to your performance pay as well, so you'll see me again with more.
Well, we love seeing you. Thank you, McCall. Hey, Andrew Letson, county administrator. Hey, Andrew Letson, county administrator.
Uh, couple of items for you, first off, uh, we're in the process right now of getting the bids back on the health insurance. And I was looking for a commissioner to represent the board on the insurance committee, which is primarily made up with, of staff with. Um, departments, various departments, as well as union reps, um, from each of our different unions, so I was wondering if anyone would be interested in.
I think Paul would do a good job on that because he's done.
Gonna say Danny.
No, I think you would, y- you have some experience in that, so, so, I'm gonna make a motion, I don't do that for you.
I'll second that. You came for that, Paul?
Looks like a, you know, mudslide going here and I'm.
I think sometimes if we have some ex, we don't need to vote on that.
No, there's no need to.
I just think you would fit into that, so.
I wanted to provide the opportunity equally to all.
Appreciate that.
Um, so Paul, I'll be in touch with you.
Opportunity.
As a reminder, we do have a work session next week, we are gonna be having a presentation from our social services department on the, um, public health. See waivers, the lifting of that and how that's gonna impact things, as well as a presentation from representatives from. Litchfield City and School District regarding the Wellness Center.
If you can advance us any information they might give you. We can be a little more versed with our questions.
I've, I've asked them if they have anything that they would like to include to the packet, otherwise I believe every other, everything I've been given already has already been sent to you, but I can make sure that. That's the case. Uh, and then otherwise, as a reminder, our offices will be closed on July fourth in, uh, observance of Independence Day.
That falls on a Monday, doesn't it?
It does.
So in looking at my meetings, I didn't have a lot, I'm just, this is preface, except we had facilities. And I didn't write anything down, yeah, I lost my notes, so Steve, you'll maybe report on, or Andrew.
Was that my, was that my cue there?
Trying to, doing a little see, covering it here because I. I know I had some notes, but what happened to them, I don't know. Dog ate them, I think.
And you have that excuse.
I do.
Well, I will go first then, the emergency services board on the eighth, we had a preliminary budget meeting. Um, the, everything has actually stayed in line pretty well there, um. And I think the, uh, you know, overall, they've been doing a good job to stay in budget. Um, they did get their audit back and that was, was a clean bill of health there as well. Um, then on the ninth, we did have facility planning meeting, um, some adjustments made and that. Coming forth.
Yep, July fifth is the intent to bring that concept plan forward for approval, we're gonna have a couple of options.
Fifth, okay.
Next county board meeting.
Um, so some adjustments, getting it down closer to that twelve million dollar mark that we talked about. I think it was slightly over twelve one fifty four.
Actually, it was pretty, it was pretty good, I thought.
Yeah, it's, I think it's, we're, we're slowly, you know, shaking the pan out to the bottom. And I think we're getting to some pretty solid numbers, so. Um, and I'm sure that there's some, uh, Andrew can maybe forward if you wanna see some of that before the meeting there's.
Yeah, we're, I, I know that they were, i- if you recall. The direction that we asked the architects to do was take the concept that they had already given us and then. Because of the investment that was gonna have to be made in level two, to also provide us an example of what it would look like to move the attorneys up to four and what that cost difference would be. So once we have that, I'll share that with them.
However, it was, it was large.
That was the back of the napkin math that we had looked at at that.
Back of the nap, yeah, it was large.
So there was, there was discussion because this level here, to put a wall in and there was.
But it wasn't, it was a large amount of money to move it up.
So it's, depends on, we said, just take another look. You know, if the, with the plan the way it is, if we. The plan is if, uh, and Brandy's fine staying where she is, I mean, but at the same time, yeah, she, she's volunteered to stay there more than once. But, um, if we're gonna, if we're not gonna move her, but then intend to make a move within two years. And we're gonna put up a temporary wall and do so, are we gonna spend some money, what is that difference? And do we spend it now versus two years from now, so that was kinda the. Basically, are we gonna hold somebody back now and then just spend it two years and would it be more beneficial to do it?
But the same, same issue applies with your hallway, Steve.
Absolutely, it's, that's what I, that's why we never.
I just, the hallway, I just don't wanna spend a pile of money on.
I mean, it's the same way at the boardroom, are we gonna move it in five years? I think we have a good plan right now the way it is.
And, and so that's why the intent is we're gonna come forward with those two options, those are the two for you to choose from and then. We'll go from there into the, getting the contracts with the architects and the, um, construction manager and studying the process of going into the detailed design.
Cause that was the only, that was the only item of discussion in, then the jail, they had the wet. Underneath the jail and they block toilets and. Fix that as part of, that's just maintenance, that. If, you know, in my opinion, you build a dyke in the cell and let them stand in it for a while, but that's me. You know, so I mean, if we can address that, that's maintenance, if we can dry up that areas underneath there, so.
And by the way, that problem we talked about is age old, it's been an issue for a while, I remember, a few years ago.
They said take toilet paper away.
You could do that, take the toilet paper away. They put their clothes, shoe, whatever, they.
Just to create a problem.
Purposeful.
So but then it creates the issue down below, what do you store under there? Um, so those are the kinda the two things that we discussed just outside of the parameters, what he proposed. Um, I also had Grove City Care meeting that afternoon, uh, there's been some issues there with city council in Grove City. Back and forth on some operational issues and who's responsible for what. And who pays for different items, so we had some, uh, extended meetings on, on that. Um, we went to a district meeting on the thirteenth in, uh, Wright Colony. And looked at what a really expensive facility looks like, um, but it is a nice building, you do have a nice.
How's it look? Nice?
It's nice, I was in Scott County yesterday too and it's. Them are bigger, much bigger counties, but.
Ours will be nice too.
But I'm trying to think what was some of the highlights at a district meeting, there wasn't nothing.
Well, there was a lot of discussion, Steve and Andrew, on the VRBOs, if you recall.
Yeah, Sterns.
On what?
Vacation by owner rules or something?
The lake homes have been get rented out and a lot of partying and then stuff in the neighborhood and causing some issues.
Probably extra usage on things that aren't normally there if you.
Rent the home and then there's six eight car, you know, I mean, just.
So ca- so you can, can you make rules so people can't rent out their own home if they want to?
Yes, you can.
Wow.
Yeah, you can, you can have licensing requirements, you can, there's a variety of things that can be done through ordinance that, um, you know, that make it. A little bit more difficult and onerous for folks to do it.
I understand that, I just don't know if it's the right thing to do. I mean, you could put, say you get a happy noisy after midnight, obviously, for them.
That comes down to an enforcement issue then.
Nice, yes.
And, and the second half is you're taking the responsible owners. And punish those ninety-five percent or better, who rent their places to responsible people and keep an eye on them. And giving them the same restrictions now is that five percent where all the issues are.
That's always the way it is.
You know, I mean, I, I hate that, having to do it that way, but it's the truth.
How did they resolve it?
Well, they have, uh, some of their townships, they haven't taken action as a.
County?
County, townships have created moratoriums.
As they explore the issue and determine how they wanna handle it.
Townships.
And.
But if it's an issue, doesn't mean we have an issue with it here.
Correct, so the, we do know that there's at least a couple of townships that have expressed issues, um, and, and Greg's had conversations with them about what their options would potentially be.
Um, and then I had another Grove City Care meeting that day as well, on the same topic as a few days before. Um, uh, then we had class and comp meeting on Tuesday the fourteenth. Discussing, uh, for the twenty twenty-three budget, some different shifts in classification. And, um, actually, the, there was four and they were. So, I would, I won't say insignificant, but they were, uh, uh, not, uh. Near as large of a budget impact as last year's, that's the way I'll put that. Um, and then we had Board of Appeals here that evening of the fourteenth. And then I had beyond the yellow ribbon on the fifteenth. Um, actually, one of their first real full, um, board meetings. Um, uh, since covid started, uh, VSO was there, had, had a good group in the room. Uh, they do a lot of, a lot of good things assisting vets and vets' families throughout the, throughout the community. So, so that was well attended. And another thing I got written here, to do, to do, to do. They must act, you know, mental health, opioid settlement was another thing that got talked about, here are my notes, my pen was run out of ink. So I don't have very good notes on the district meeting, but the opioid settlement and. Uh, and broadband, those two things are talked about a lot in the district meeting, that's a big, big items there. Um, and adult mental health and mental health in, in general, so. But other than that, I don't have a whole lot.
Okay, who wants to be next? Go ahead, whoever does.
Were you finished, Beth, or did you want to?
Um, I can go if you'd like, I didn't have much, I'm starting to feel a little lazy after, so, I've had some things, um, we had a hospital board meeting yesterday. Early in the morning because they had a chamber turning, tournament going on. Must have been warm, so, and over finances, their, the forecasts look pretty good. Um, we had some discussion about, um, covid. I think they're at about, we're at about eighteen percent positivity rate that they track right now, it isn't tracked according to who's vaccinated and who's not. Um, uh, the, uh, triage line is still open, they're not doing testing in the garage anymore or anything like that. So we're kinda moving past. Talked about, um, the fact that infants can now, I don't know what the age was.
Five months, six months.
Can be vaccinated, they're not expecting a big surge in vaccinations from that. Most of the, uh, testing is either done in the clinic, the vaccinations are done in the clinic, um. Talked a little about, about traveling nurses, trying to find some places for them to stay, that's becoming a bit of an issue. So I kinda brought up the, um.
Rosemary.
The what?
Rosemary.
Rosemary Home, I'm sorry, it escaped me. I said, cause that was initially put up for that. And I, this was interesting, there's no air conditioning there, so, you know, maybe the hospital should look into.
Is the Rosemary Home owned by?
No, but it's, it's the Copelands, if I remember the history on this. And I think they have, well, Corey, I think you used to live there, yeah. And you were caretaker there, yeah, so, did they have nurses coming in then and staying?
They did, they even had some surge techs who were on call or nurses and then student teachers, it was initially. For nursing students, and then when that program at the hospital went away, then it became just. Either student teachers, nurses that were on call and lived farther away than what the requirement was and.
So maybe, maybe that might be something if we could get some, I don't know, so, so something tossing out there because, or if we, you get new people. And they can't find a place to stay, we've got a couple coming in now that are gonna live in campers, so, I mean, and. And the campground's at fall, so, we had some discussion about that, um, it wasn't, I think that was about all, I don't remember anything else.
One, one interesting fact was the, the rise in covid. Um, positive people who have been vaccinated and boosted.
Yeah, except locally, they're not tracking, I don't know if anybody's really tracking that, cause I asked that question and. And then you have to wonder, they get covid then, do they have some immunity, I mean, there's just a whole bunch of questions. Um, that's all, uh, that's all I had, I just ended and the facility meetings.
Okay, I'll go next. Well, we had our regular meeting back on the seventh, and then Paul and I had. The aquatic invasive species meeting that Thursday, the ninth. I was able to attend for the first hour, but then I had another meeting, I had to leave at three. And there was one item left on the agenda, and I'll let Paul address that, I. The part of the meeting that I was at, I didn't find anything of extreme importance. Um, then we had the equalization, that was on Tuesday the fourteenth. Amy and her assistants, they did a very nice job. There was one person in attendance at the equalization meeting who brought forth an appeal about his taxation, we welcomed that individual. Uh, then on Thursday, the sixteenth, I had a Pioneer Land Library meeting in Wilmer. And they always share, I think it's interesting information, thirty-two libraries in the Pioneer system. They have about a hundred and sixty employees, thirty of whom are full-time. There are no federal funds that go for our libraries, and for the past twelve years, there's been no state funding for our local Pioneer Land Libraries. So the libraries are dependent on city and county dollars to operate, they've been, they've been maintaining a tight budget. So that, that went well. Then, um, we are here today and now this afternoon, Paul and I will have a personnel meeting. That'll be this afternoon, and then we come back on the twenty-eighth for. A work session, and on the twenty-eighth, I'll have an extension meeting out at the fairgrounds. On the afternoon of twenty eighth. You're next.
You're done, huh? Well, I had a PAC meeting, uh, I'm learning so much about, uh, young people and the drug issues. That are really out there, I, I, you know, maybe I'm just naive and, and didn't realize it, but it's pretty significant. And they really do a lot of things, um, for prevention and education on the drug portion. For these young people, in addition to the other things that they do for families, but that's really pretty important. Um, the AIS meeting that, uh, the following day that, um, Julie alluded to. Prior to that, in the morning, we had our waste management meeting, which we did our business today, uh, from what happened in that meeting, uh, that morning, so. But the AIS meeting, it was kind of, uh, interesting because. I took a look at some counties and I had talked to someone from another county, uh, and it turns out it was Crow, Crow Wing County. They, they get far more money than we do. And the way they laid their budget out and the way they did things is, it, it may be a model that we need to look at. From an AIS standpoint, um, I, I know I'm being a little vague here, but. Um, I really haven't discussed too much about it, but I, is something that Julie, I showed it to Julie and, and she agreed, she, uh, had things, so. We may try and move to a little bit different model on the AIS, um, thing. Uh, we had Eric Kotzmeier from the DNR there, uh, and I asked him a very pertinent question. Um, and told him he didn't have to answer me, cause I did not wanna get him in trouble, but I asked him if he really felt. The inspections that are happening at boat landings, um, create the value that we spend. We spent a hundred and fifty-three thousand, I believe, on our inspectors through the course of the summer. They inspect on Friday, Saturday and Sunday, um, the balance of the week, you come and go. Um, he indicated that he felt that, um, it wasn't so much inspections, it was more an opportunity for education. Educate people about, um, the weeds, the prevention and the spread. Um, and. I live next to a landing, I live next to where an inspector was, they do do their job. Um, and, but I don't know that we're getting enough punch for our dollar. If we have a hundred people that go into that lake and out of that lake on Friday, Saturday and Sunday, but we have a hundred people. Who land their boats Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, we're catching, we're catching fifty percent. So, um, and Julie and I are on the same page on this, we really need, before we approve one for next year, we're really gonna take a look at this. And see if this is something we wanna continue, or do we wanna target? Minibel, where there's a decontamination unit and Stella, where the decontamination units are, and just require decontamination when you come out. Or prior to going in, because we know those two lakes both have zebra mussels. So, maybe we need to ramp down. So, maybe we need to ramp down on the others, ramp up on a couple of them. And that may be a better situation, so it's, it's things we're gonna be looking at and talking about. To see if that might be a better use of our dollars to shift a little bit. AMC, he pretty well covered that, I thought it was a good meeting, it was fun to tour Wright County's building. Yeah, they have some expensive things in there, but they also were very frugal. What did they call, what they had put over the, the sheet rock?
Something plaster, I can't remember.
Yeah, it was like a glaze, a designed glaze, but it was very economical to put on, easy to.
It looks like stone.
Yeah, but it was very economical, he said, to put it up, so, um. You know, we, we saw little bits and pieces of things that, you know, saved them some money, cause we had fifty-two million, I, I don't know if you're really worried about saving money, but. It's a beautiful facility. Do we need it? No, my gosh, no, but it still was a, a, a nice facility, a fun facility to tour. Just to see some of the innovation that they had built into the building. You know, every light, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think he said every light in that building was strategically placed. To have a certain function within a wide area, so, um, light bulbs, windows, everybody had. Every office had some view of the outside, nobody was without, you know, if they stood up in their cubicle, they had a view of the outside. Health partners had, um, partnered with them for a rec room or, uh. At a treadmill and.
Weights and, yeah, there was two gyms on the campus, one was in the Justice Center and one was in the Center.
And then in social services, the one office had a workstation with a treadmill on it.
Correct, yep.
That was interesting, but a lot of that was funded, I, I understood by health partners.
I believe so.
Yeah, so it was, uh, that was interesting to see.
The other thing I was gonna add, Paul, that I didn't bring up a district meeting, the Western Interstate region. Uh, Minnesota joined that WIR, which is, I can't remember how, I just. Reading here, I can't remember how many states are in it, but, um.
Thirteen sounds about right.
Thir- that's why it's not thirteen or eighteen or, but, um. We did get accepted into the, into that group of Western states, North, all our, all our neighbors.
That have similar issues as we do. So, kinda banded with that, that group.
And it's actually, there's an article on it in the. News, Todd Patsers is in there, so.
So then after the Board of Equalization, I got a call from Danielson Township, could I come to their meeting, uh, that was going on. And I went, uh, they have, um, we had approved a CUP for a dairy. And one of the things that was happening was the roads out there were absolutely getting torn up. Uh, they are all gravel, they have no blacktop in their township. But it's just pounded and there was no dust control being put on, um, these folks. You know, I listened to their issues and, and, um. I told them that I would come back on Thursday because I wanted to actually see what kinda truck traffic was really going on. The day I came, there was dust control, they were out there with a watering truck, a tanker, and they were laying down. Some moisture to help, help the dust, but those roads are in very rough shape. I spoke with Greg in planning and zoning and I, I think as a protection for some of these small townships now. Danielson doesn't have a lot of money, okay, so, but they're gonna have to rebuild that road when this is over with. Because there was no condition put into the CUP. That those roads had to be put back to pre-permit condition by the builder, so. I, I had a good discussion with Greg, I said, this has to be something that we consider when we're approving these conditional use permits.
Well, and I, cause yeah, some of these projects are becoming large, just, they're major construction project, I mean, they're, you know, I mean. So there is a lot of heavy traffic on them roads and them township roads aren't designed for it, so.
The traffic will continue too after construction.
The projects are large and, and. It's just the nature of the, the business that we do now, I mean, and agriculture has gotten big, so these, you know, these expansions and stuff. Lot of dirt, earth mov- you know, I mean, just a lot of dirt moving and product and stuff, so.
Danielson Township was, is very supportive of the growth of this industry, that, that's not what they were upset about at all. It's that, hey, we're gonna have to try and rebuild this road when this is over with and so. Uh, I just, I just thought it would be a good idea if, if Greg had the planning and zoning, when they bring these CUPs forward, that should be a. Should be one of the conditions that could potentially be put in there.
Just to maintain the road, some restrict, or stipulations on how the road is maintained during the process.
But, um, you know, I mean. You, you go out there and, and it was kinda funny because as I was at this, uh, gentleman's house and we were visiting. Here came the water tank, he got to the, his driveway and he shut it off, shut the water off. Got past his house and turned it back on, I'm like, what's going on here?
And the answer was?
I don't know, uh, you know. It, it clearly had had some put on it, so, I mean, as he went by, it didn't throw a lot of dust, so maybe he had cut that area prior to that, so. CPT Executive Board, um, they had, uh, six candidates in which they have interviewed, um, they have. Made a selection. And I don't know, they, they s- did not give us many details about it, cause we don't know if this person will accept the offer or not. If they accept the offer, then we will have a new, um, executive director there, which I think will be onsite. There will be no, yeah, an occasionally remote working from home. But by and large, it's going to be onsite, which I felt was very, very important, uh, to have that exec there. Second thing is, um, because we own this company, uh, but the owner of the building is going to be putting the building up for sale. Uh, he's gonna give us first opportunity to buy it. So, um, we are looking at purchasing that building versus having to try and move. Out and find a new location. So we, we put together a small building committee because the first thing we gotta look at, let's look at the foundation, let's look at the roof. If we're good on the bottom and we're good on the top, we can alter anything in between and then it's a matter of negotiating the best price we can, but. I have a hunch that. If we don't, if he does continue the lease, it's gonna go significantly up because it's, right now it's two thousand dollars a month. So, not that bad per square foot. We'll see what we find out on our meeting the twenty-seventh, so. And Beth, Beth, um, talked about the hospital board, it was really uneventful from the standpoint of no earth shattering things that came out of that. Hospital meeting, it was just nice to see that it continues to show profit, so.
I had just had a quick thing, uh, beyond the Yellow Ribbon, I forgot to mention that they will have a, a booth in the park here for Watercade. During Watercade and stuff, um, on the, over that weekend. And, uh, also, uh, Eric Day, M, in Minnesota, economic, our development corp, economic development. Who used to be in, uh, worked for CMJTS over here in Social Family Services building. He is our executive director at MMDC and the executive board, um, which I was not on. Um, they, uh, offered to give him a promotion, a two-step increase. And he declined that and said that he would stay in step with the rest of his team and his colleagues. So he, uh, I thought that was a very, uh, just a good reference to the type of individual and integrity that he carries with him. He has done a very good job for MMDC, he came on right at the start of Colt Lake, his first day was March fifteenth, twenty twenty, so. So he's had, uh, but he's put together a good team of individuals and done a very good job leading so far, so.
Councilman Carlson had reached out about a booth or something at the.
Bingo.
Bingo, yeah, did, uh, did you get a?
Yeah, I, I responded with the folks who responded to me, gave them their names and he said that he was gonna work on coordinating it, so. It's at the county fair in August.
Okay, anything else, Paul?
I have nothing.
You just caused me to go off my schedule. Very disappointed in you, kidding.
You hurt my feelings, that's all right. You're not the first one to hurt my feelings.
I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second by Schmidt, we adjourned.
I did forget the IT meeting, but that's all right.
What'd you miss?
I forgot the IT meeting.
Oh, go ahead.
No, 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 no.
Paul, let's hear about it, I'm interested, I was just kidding.
We can, um, we can discuss it at the next meeting, that's fine.